At the ready, Ali. Thank you, everyone. Chair would like to call this order the regular monthly meeting of the Board of Trustees in Village of Lake Barrington. It is Tuesday, July 9, 2019. It is 7:02, and I'll ask the clerk to please call the phone.
Trustee Burke, trustee Mitchell, trustee Perkins?
Here.
Trustee Rigby?
Here.
Trustee Schaller?
Here.
Trustee Thompson?
Here.
President Richardson?
Here. Would you all rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We just celebrated the fourth. It's great fun. My wife and the girls when I were in London, great fun to celebrate Independence Day with you guys. They got quite a sense of humor. They say, "We actually call it Thanksgiving right now." There was a YouTube clip on this Independence Day. Any of us who are of a certain generation will come and see it, and I'll be happy to send you the link. In 1985, the variety clubs, which is a movie star charity in Hollywood for years and years and years, did an annual dinner honoring somebody, and they honored a great event in 85. Steve Lawrence and Edie Gourmet did a melody of combined American patriotic songs. And when you're feeling down and you need a little lift, that is just the best possible tonic for you. I might even show it to you one night. You know, and those were the two couples that kind of epitomized devotion to one another, Steve and Edie, Ronnie and Nancy. We can move to agenda items. We get to do something really pleasant here, which is to administer the open office to officials. And we have two to administer tonight. One is an open office for our colleague and friend Jim Thompson. And I see he brought his niece with him. And then there are our friend and colleague Susie Perkins as well. Karen or Jim, are there any particular setups that we need to do here?
No, I think we're going to meet in the podium.
Great, great.
Do you want to do trustee Thompson first?
Aye, aye.
Okay.
Lisa, are you going to take your pictures?
We're both here, we're doing.
Good, good, good. And Jimmy, it would be entirely appropriate, if you wish, you can come up and stand next to your husband as he does this.
That'd be great.
Okay, what a pleasure. Would you repeat after me, please, and would you raise your right hand? And I?
Aye.
State your name.
Jim Thompson.
Having been elected?
Having been elected.
To the office of village trustee?
To the office of village trustee.
In the village of Lake Barrington?
In the village of Lake Barrington.
In the county of Lake Oforset?
County of Lake.
Oforset.
Oforset.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution?
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States?
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge?
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office?
The duties of the office.
Of village trustee?
Of village trustee.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
It's my pleasure. Susie, if you'd just repeat after me and state your name.
If you raise your right hand.
Aye?
Aye, Susie Perkins.
Having been appointed to the office?
Having been appointed to the office.
Of village trustee?
Of village trustee.
In the village of Lake Barrington?
In the village of Lake Barrington.
In the county of Lake Oforset?
In the county of Lake Oforset.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution?
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States?
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois?
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge?
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office?
The duties of the office.
Of village trustee?
Of village trustee.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Agenda item five this evening is the approval of the minutes from our meetings last month. Five A is approval of the minutes from the special committee of the whole, held on June 5, and five B is minutes of the full board of trustees meeting also held that same day. Are there questions on the minutes or proposed edits or corrections for the quarter? There being none, Chair would like a motion to approve and block agenda items five A and five B, minutes of the special committee of the whole and minutes of the full board of trustees, June 5, 2019. May I have your showings? My trustee Schaller, may I please have a second? My trustee Rigby, thank you both gentlemen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Chair will leave the record open for a period of five business days for any technical or conforming amendments to the minutes without objection to the quarter. Agenda item six is president's remarks. I thought in Andy Burke's absence that I'd invite Kathleen Scott to come up and give a report on some of the economic development activities. And that way you don't have to sit around until later in the agenda when those community boards come up. So Kathleen, well, it's good to see you. And Andy says in regards, he's out in Yellowstone. I said if he wanted to see hot air or pressure, he could just come to this meeting.
I'm Kathleen Scott, Scott Partners. And even though it's not time for our update, economic development has made a lot of progress in the last six weeks, and we have some interesting news to share. Just an update on what we've been up to. And well, we successfully launched our 2019 business visits. We're calling it tour 2019, and we're going to meet with each and every business in the village in a timely manner. And village administrator Karen Dalton-Lang and I had the opportunity to meet with Jill at Mower Works, Phil at Casey Printown, Bill at Joseph D. Foreman and Company. And we're scheduled to meet with Tom at the graphics art studio Thursday this week. And it was wonderful because no one had any complaints. There were a couple of questions, and Karen was able to give them good answers regarding SSAs expiring and things like that. And everyone seemed pretty content and happy and glad to be a member of the business community of the village. So I was really happy to see that. On June 26, village administrator Karen Dalton-Lang and I attended the BizNow Chicago Hospitality Summit. And it was a really enlightening, interesting event. It was on hospitality, which is basically focused on the hotel industry in Chicago and the Chicago suburbs. And it was a coming together of all of the big players. And it was interesting to watch them interact, to interview them a little, to learn more of what we need to know here. And so we learned a lot more about the development process, which isn't quite as scary as we thought, but it's still going to take a lot of time and energy and effort. But at least we weren't discouraged, and that's a good thing. In fact, just this past Monday, July 8, village administrator Karen Dalton-Lang was contacted by one of the hotel developers that we had spoken with at length at the summit. And so it would probably be best for Karen to share the details of the discussion, first person here.
Sure. First, I want to correct. We're not going to visit each and every business because that's over 300, I think, I've done over 200. But maybe the top people, 20 or so. But Kathleen's right, it's kicked off to a very good start. Businesses have opened their doors to us, have sat down and chatted. They weren't in a hurry to show us off. We got to meet with their dogs. It was all good. If you were wearing field clothes, it was good. So on that note, yeah, Kathleen and I spent a lot of time at the BizNow Chicago Summit, going up and talking to people. And we happened across a hotel developer and architect, and we probably spent 20 minutes picking their brain and talking to them. And he followed up with a phone call on Monday. He invited us to go to a brand opening of a hotel he just developed and finished in Bridgeview? Bridge, sorry, Bridgeview. Unfortunately, it's the same night as our inaugural concert. So I said, "Well, we can't make that." So he invited Kathleen and I, and when trustee Burke is back in town, to come down and he will give us a tour of it. We chatted a little bit about, you know, what it aims for development. And, you know, he's a good developer. He wants everything in the world that he can get. And I recognize that. I used to be a developer. But, you know, you can kind of sort through what they mean and what they don't mean. So like Kathleen said, we got a lot of good information at this BizNow Chicago Hospitality Summit, a little bit more understanding. They also talked a lot about the economy right now and how that affects hotel development, and also how leadership of the different towns affect hotel development. So this was all, you know, I think, good news for us. So I think so. Yeah, so starting out, we were encouraged, which is a good thing. And moving forward, we will continue meeting with the businesses. One of us wants to get to all of them eventually. As long as we don't get any complaints, I think we'll be fine. Yeah, exactly.
So we're going to continue meeting with them. We're trying to schedule it when it's not very intrusive for the businesses. So we're sort of picking midweek, mid-morning, mid-afternoon. And I think they recognize that we're trying to accommodate them while, you know, stopping and making introductions so that they can get to know people that they can contact in the village, and we get to know the people that are running businesses in the village. We will also be scheduling, as Karen mentioned, the meeting with the hotel developer when trustee Burke is available, to learn more about how we might be able to find out more about the survey and the study and what we already have and how it might be applicable to what we would need. So it's all welcome so far, and I'm really happy to be able to provide that sort of update. Any questions?
Yeah, in the business that you and Karen have made, there's a couple of scenarios that are always possible. And I'm glad to, I'm glad for some of the detail that you provided. Either you learned something new that you didn't know, that was a positive or a negative, or you had something reaffirmed, which was a prior belief that was simply validated for better or for worse. Any highlights of the, this is old, remember the commercial I should have had, V8, at a moment, was there anything that stuck out to you?
Well, the dogs were interested, yes, we don't think, because we left their smell like wet everywhere. And it was the early morning meeting, so.
Yeah, one of the businesses keeps their dog there, and they go out to Pepper Lake every day and swim their dogs. They're very humor dogs.
They got there, and they were done.
Yeah. I think one of the nice feedbacks we got from one of the owners was they said they really appreciated when the business, when the village put in the walking van out there, that they very much liked it, and their staff liked that, to walk down to Pepper Park Coffee or just walk for exercise during their room time. And other businesses have been there for a long time, and they appreciated, you know, the village's support when we use local businesses and when we direct people there. Like Kathleen said, one had a question about the SSA, and was happy to hear it's expiring next year, and that sort of thing. So they're, so far, they're all really nice. That's great.
We've had some of them appear here during the public comment session, just to give a little bit of background on what they do to help. I would certainly welcome your recommendations of others to invite them for a similar thing. Not quite an infomercial, but simply just a, here's who we are, here's what we do.
We did encourage the business owners to come and partake of a meeting and, you know, watch their elected officials in action. And, you know, and Karen did mention that, you know, they could introduce themselves during the meeting, you know, as to assist them with and everything.
Yeah, and I recently sent that to All American Recclaim. I went down to visit them a couple of weeks, or last week, I think it was, just to see how their moving in process was going. And it's a big job to move from their Crystal Lake facility to their new Lake Barrington facility. And they said as soon as they get set up and ready to go, they're ready to join the chamber and, you know, the whole ribbon cutting and come in to introduce themselves officially to the manager.
Oh, we'll wait to that. Are there questions for Kathleen or comments? Wonderful. I appreciate your help, Kathleen. Thank you very, very much for your dedication. Agenda item seven is the first opportunity in the agenda for the public to address the board of non-agenda items. Chair would wish you to introduce yourself. Come on, please, welcome. And for the record, if you'll please introduce yourself and your address.
Absolutely. My name is Sean Kenny. I'm a horse and girl. It's 2686, 26868 Northwest Highway. So I run up by Mower Works where Kathleen was talking about before. I've been there for four years, actually, four years. And what's today's date?
The ninth.
The ninth, tomorrow, four years. So I have a couple of reasons why I'm here today. One is to ask for a little bit of relief from the board. I got a letter regarding the amusement thing. I brought a copy of this letter. I don't know who I should hand it to. I wish I could make eight copies for the board.
The clerk will read it.
But this is just a letter that I sent to my landlord. And the landlord at the property, Monoline Property Management. So it just kind of outlines some of the things I've been going through over there with them. They took over, I think, about two years ago, when they bought the property from the bank. And, you know, I really didn't have any issues. I saw some of the stuff that he was doing, his cleanup of the property, you know, putting coat of paint on it, some stuff like that. And he did some things that he told me that he eventually would correct. And I've given it a lot of time, so I kind of outlined those in the letter for you. Hopefully, you all have a chance to read it at some point in time. But the major issues we've had is in the wintertime, you know, it's an older building. It's got older HVAC units on it. And in the wintertime, we had two cracked heat exchangers on our HVAC units. And in our lease, you know, leases cannot reiterate, is right. So in our lease, it says we're responsible for normal wear and tear maintenance on the HVAC units. Our understanding of normal wear and tear is replacing belts or doing preventive maintenance, changing filters, things of that nature. Just to give you a little background on the units on the roof, I believe they might be upwards of 25-plus years old. Most people were not working. I've had two to three technicians come out, look at them, and they're like, "I'm condemning these units." Those are their words to me. They can't, they're so old that if you want to rebuild them, it would be like buying a new unit. I don't own the units. So I'm just, I'm going by the lease. So for three months, from January to through March, we pretty much had 50-degree temperatures in our business. We brought in space heaters, we did everything we could. That was the safest solution. They brought in a small space heater that probably heated enough for maybe about four people to sit there. We lost a tremendous amount of sales in those three months. We lost almost $25,000 to $30,000 in sales. For a restaurant that does $375,000 a year in sales, that's a significant hit. Now we're in the latter months. I tried to talk to him about that, and he just tells me to keep reading my lease. Because the condition's the same thing, 25-plus-year-old units. He uses a refrigerator called R22. R22 has been January 1, 2020. It's not to be used anymore. It was a United States law, I believe. So not to mention the fact that if you tried to fix the units with R22, you'd be dumping hundreds, well, actually, thousands of dollars into that in R22, just because of the cost of it. They don't make them anymore. There's no guarantee that those units will function properly for a long period of time based on their age. In the meantime, once again, now I have hot temperatures to deal with, which puts a strain on my business, because if you want a place like today and it doesn't have air conditioning, you're probably going to, you know, do a little 180 and mark right out. So that's something that we're fighting right now. I do have some temporary fixes in place. I don't know how long they're going to last. And to be honest with you, you know, those fixes are simply bypassing things that are there for safety of the unit. But I'm just doing what I can to get by. So we've probably lost, you know, $10,000 to $15,000 in the summer time in sales. So I just want to bring this to your guys' attention, and I just want to ask for some relief in regards to the amusement devices I have in my place. I did pay my business license and my liquor license and my patio license, my retail license, so those are up to date. I'm just here today for the first time, I want to talk about to see if I can get some relief from the board in regards to that, because right now I'm just trying to keep my doors open as a business owner.
Mr. Clerk or Council Administrator, do I have any detail on what that expense is?
I'm not sure I have the dollar on. I do know that he, Mr. Kenny represented, that he would, he asked for more time to pay when the licenses were due back in May. And then he's, he's asked if he postponed to May 31. And then he's, in June, in June 18, he emailed a letter, or the village emailed and sent him a letter where it was requested to make the payment, with the addition of the Lathie as well, which is what we would always assess when someone does.
Do we have discretion to waive the Lathie?
Do you have the letter that I was going to?
I do.
This is a copy of the letter.
Oh, we're just looking for the amount. I mean, I don't know if it's a nice, thank you.
I would recommend the board not get into the position of litigating between the two.
Yeah.
I'm not asking for that.
Well, you are, actually.
Well, there's two issues. Counsel is right. I'm a good enough lawyer to know I'm not a very good lawyer, but I play a lot on TV sometimes. And we can't get involved, dispute between you and your commercial landlord, but we'll be happy to take a look at the contents of your letter and if there are, if there are possible extensions or waivers or so forth, relative to our licensing fee. We're happy to at least give value.
Absolutely.
You know, my wife and I stop in once in a while. First, it was my dad that was at Lake Barrington Woods.
Okay.
And, you know, we certainly want to see you succeed. But the trick is, and that's why this is important, is we also have obvious issues with the law consistently. And so I want to be fair. I'll commit to keeping the letter full and thorough and fairly, and ask my colleagues to do the same.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate that. That's all I'm really asking for.
The amount of issues indicated in the letter that Mr. Kenny got on June 18, it was $400 in amusement machine fees, amusement device fees, $100 per device, and then $200 in penalties since he hasn't been paid yet.
Okay.
Have you paid the principal mom of the fee yet?
I haven't.
No parts were paid?
I haven't, I haven't.
Okay.
And when was that fee due? Was that May 1? We extended it to May 31, or?
You know, we extended it. It's on April 30, the end of the month. We extended it to $50 per device.
Yeah.
Around $200.
Yeah, I just wanted the board to know, at my discretion, I gave a 30-day extension to May 30, you know, before the Lathies would kick in.
I'd like us all to have a chance to read the letter.
Yeah, absolutely.
Please.
Yeah. So the other thing I wanted to ask about, I know it's about, when I first moved there, we talked about gaming, maybe personally, and trustee Burke, who's not here today. I just, I'd been asked by a group of the people that might be eligible in Lake Barrington, who might possibly revisit that, I was going to ask the board what I would have to do on my end to bring that to your, to your.
Yeah, and Sean, when Andy and I met with you, and I appreciate the fact that you asked in a polite and serious fashion your background in the restaurant business, it's something I appreciate. It's a brutal business. So, but I, I said to you then, and I don't think anything has changed, the community's had this discussion, and it's not, it's not, it's not coming back up. It just isn't. And I'd rather have you be irritated with me than misleading you.
No, absolutely.
This issue has been decided, and it's been decided a couple of times by the community, and the margins are overwhelming in the communities. You and I shared the majority's view on this. So I can't give you any encouragement. I don't see any circumstance under which we will revisit the issue.
Okay.
You know, I think at the time, we talked about if there was something else we could do to be of assistance. You know, your competitors at River Zed and at Tin Man have very small outdoor facilities for smokers, which is a bigger problem in the winter, because they're out there freezing. I see that you can make some improvements in the patio there and so forth. If there's anything we can do to help advertise or within our network of things, I'm certainly, we're certainly open to that.
Okay.
But I would be misleading, and I'm not going to do that. This board has made a clear decision, and it's not subject to revisitation.
Okay. Well, I appreciate the honesty.
Thank you.
Okay. So, thank you all very much.
All right. We will take a look at the letter, and I promise you, you'll get a reply.
Okay. Thank you all so much.
Thank you very much.
Nice job.
Agenda item eight is the consent agenda. And the process here, set forth in the agenda, is it allows us to be more efficient in conducting the public's business by approving items on an omnibus vote basis through the consent agenda. We have three items tonight of which we discussed in the committee of the whole meeting previously. The concert at Friar Farm, and the action item there is to approve a temporary use special event application for the concert on the 18th from 6 to 9 p.m. B, financial statement audit contract, and the recommended action there is to allow the administrator to execute a contract with, is it amen or amen?
Amen.
Amen, thank you. In the amounts that follow, $10,100 for FY '20, $10,350 for FY '21, and $10,600 for FY '22. And C, IT where client first, that's to allow the administrator to execute a contract where client first, in an amount not to exceed $24,555, and further authorize the administrator to expect a contingency amount of up to 10%, which is $2,455, to cover any additions or changes due to unforeseen circumstances, and of course authorize the administrator to execute the necessary corresponding documents. Are there questions on any of these issues at this time? If not, then Chair would like a motion to approve and block omnibus basis agenda items eight A through eight C, as stated in the recommended actions of the consent agenda. May I have the motion, please?
Absolutely.
Seconded by trustee Thompson. Thank you both gentlemen. Ask the question, please. Call the roll.
Trustee Rigby?
Aye.
Trustee Thompson?
Yes.
Trustee Perkins?
Yes.
Trustee Schaller?
Yes.
President Richardson?
Yes, thank you. Agenda item nine this evening is the treasurer's report. Mrs. Hirsch, thank you. How's the new rent sign?
Fabulous. I'm going to babysit next Monday.
Putting the calendar.
What's that?
Just keeping.
Just keeping, yeah. It's like, yeah, this is my first time. No, it's fabulous. So thanks for asking. So before you, you have one month. You have May 31, 2019, our first year of our fiscal year 2020 in front of you. You'll see on our flash report on page two, total assets are equal $2,434,000. We have current liabilities at $645,000, and equity $1,789,000. So our assets and our current liabilities, our assets equal our current liabilities plus our equity, $2,434,000. Revenue for the first month is $194,000. Expenses are $173,000, giving us a net income of $21,000. That compares to, at this point last year, the net income was $140,000. There was two large items that make up that difference. We had a distribution from the Yonex Trust, $88,000, and also real estate taxes was $50,000 higher, mail last year over this year, if you recall. The state was, people were paying their taxes early last year to get that one last year of the. of the state income tax, or the state real estate tax deduction, so that, it's just a timing difference, I'm not concerned about that in the least. So we'll go down to our logo line, we'll look at our, what we call our regular operations in a camera loss, and you'll see that we had five thousand one hundred ninety-one dollars of what we call extraordinary expenses. That was two driveway culverts that were put in in May. So that puts our extraordinary, our income from regular operations at twenty-six thousand dollars versus a hundred and forty from last year, but differences for the same reasons I just discussed. So we'll go ahead and look at the budget to actual on page 78. I don't think there's much discuss, it's really one month of our fiscal year. You'll see on page seven, we have our revenues are six months, but actual to budget. And then on page eight, our expenses are at five percent, actual to budget. Once again, it's just one month. Unless there are specific questions, I don't think there's any other logic to point out this, no. Okay, we can turn to page nine, do a quick look at the mortgage tax fund. We have current assets in there of two hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. We're not planning to use this fund this year, so it'll continue to grow about ten thousand dollars a month. The new tax that was imposed July 1st, we'll start to see an increase in September, October, and IML's projecting about a fifty percent increase in marginal tax, so an extra five thousand dollars a month, which will add up nicely over the year, so we're all paying for it, so I'm sure we're all listening as a pound of fire, yes. As I said, on page 12, we'll look at the water sewer fund, not much to mention there. We have net gross, our net is a million four hundred eighty-six thousand dollars. Capital plans issue a call for a planned expenditure of a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Obviously, we have more than enough funds to cover those amounts. So that's really that for the financial statements for the month, and I'll talk about them more, and any questions beforehand on the financial statements. Okay, looking at warrant A, we actually have a number of unusual requests this month. Warrant A, applied ecological services for three thousand five hundred eighty-seven dollars, and that's for Ozley related work. Cock mosquito, it's only unusual because it's the first of four payments, it's six thousand two hundred fifty dollars, we've given twenty-five thousand dollars through our budget. H.R. Green has two invoices, nine thousand five hundred and five thousand three hundred five dollars as engineering services for Anderson Road project that's beginning soon.
Done.
Oh, excuse me. I knew as I was saying those words, I'm like, okay. And that was, that's crazy impact fees, that's coming from the general funding, I shared a paper.
That was the, I just want to clarify, that ninety-five hundred was the engineering design in the fifty-three oh five that we paid them, that's for about a little over half of the construction supervision, that the project's been done, they're just, okay, they're going.
Thank you. Continuing here, Minute Man Press for one thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars, that's for a recent newsletter that went out. Municipal CMS, three thousand one hundred ninety-six dollars, that's our annual website hosting. Kathy Scott for four thousand five hundred, that was the focus group study that we discussed last month. Fifty-six thousand eight hundred eleven dollars to Speedway, and that's the rebate of capital of calendar year 2019, 2018, excuse me, sales tax. And then additionally, one last thing to mention, between warrant A and B, there are fifty-five thousand six hundred and fifteen dollars of bond refund request. It was a big push this month to start cleaning up some of those, for the project to finish, cleaning up those protocols, bond money has been sitting here at the village, so I think eleven bond, bonds were being refunded this month. That's all I have. Any questions, Board?
First month is always easy. It's like the first weekend in college, the blossoms.
Yeah. Thank you.
I learned that from my friend who lived in the university in Georgia. Other questions for the treasurer? Okay, and Chair would like a motion to approve and block, and thank you, Mrs. First. Agenda items A to C, approved financial statements as of May 31, 2019. B, pay bills in the amount of three hundred twenty-six thousand three hundred nineteen dollars and forty-two cents, as listed on the accounts payable warrant A dated July 9, 2019. And C, pay bills in the amount of twenty-two thousand four hundred fifty-six dollars and forty-three cents, as listed on the accounts payable warrant B dated July 9, 2019. Please say thank you for writing this, would like to block. Chair would like a motion to approve and block, please.
Absolutely.
By Trusty Thompson, may I please add a second? By Trusty Schaller, thank you both gentlemen, clerk, please call the board.
Trusty Thompson?
Yes.
Trusty Schaller?
Yes.
Trusty Perkins?
Yes.
Trusty Rickby?
Hi.
President Richardson?
Yes. Agenda item Tennessee Administrator's Report.
Sure. I wanted to let you know that Gwalt Hamilton has started working on updating our TIS. As you may recall, we talked about that during the budget meetings. This is an update to the Business Park Utility Mapping, is basically what it is, for water and sanitary sewer. And this will help with not only us knowing where things are, but it'll also help with the ISO insurance ratings and keeping those favorable. Tim and Tony from Fox River Grove have been working on updating our current paper map, which is about the size of a twin bed sheet, and getting that a little bit more succinct and with foul and fire locations. Secondly, Lake County Stormwater Management Commission, they're having a rainfall data presentation at the Village of Barrington in a couple of weeks, and Flint Creek, Spring Creek Watership Partnership will be attending as well as myself. The public is invited, but as I previously reported here, the state's Geological Services has recommended increasing the rate of all data used when you calculate how large a stormwater management basin needs to be. And so I think most people think this is long overdue, but it'll take some time to implement and get going. Cuba Township had a busy month, they provided our residents with additional services at no extra cost. This mainly included trimming a lot of trees in our parkways, especially after the June 30th and July 2nd storms. People can still put their branches and twigs that are eight inches in diameter and last out of the roadside, and they will come by and mowch those up and take that away, but please call Cuba Township and give them your address, just to make sure they don't miss it. Also, they've done some filling of puddles for me, and some, they dropped off a mowch for the community garden, which is much appreciated. Bay Pug and our committees, our communities are members of the Northwest Water Planning Alliance, and that's a five-county cargo organization, and they are working on groundwater management. And the committee is about to issue a best management practices manual for sensible salting. We've talked about salt use in our town before. All of Cuba Township's people that work on the snowpiling trucks and spread salt have been to the Lake County facility for a day of training, I attended that last year with them, and learning about sensible salting. This is going to move forward to present some things to businesses that have large parking lots, you know, for example, the hospitals, stores, apartment complexes, and getting the word out to them, because many of them still pay their contractor by how much salt they use, rather than sensible salting, so it becomes the contractor to use lots of salt. So stay tuned for more information on that. And last but not least, we received a check for seven thousand dollars last week for the Open Lands Comet Green Midget Grant. This money will be used for the healthy outage to replace buckform along Old Barrington Road, and a meeting is scheduled for next week with our partners, which are Citizens for Conservation, the Flint Creek, Spring Creek Watership Partnership, and the Park District. So we're on the minutes for that. So that's it. Any questions on that?
Questions? If not, we can move to Agenda item 11, which is the clerk's report.
You should have all received our summer newsletter, your mailbox by now, and we would like to thank Max Strategies, specifically Julie Larson of Max Strategies, for her help with the new layout and the look to the newsletter, if everyone likes it.
My wife noticed it and complimented it, and she thought it was a much sharper, better looking.
Yes, you like it. And then just save the day for the barn stump, it's a little bit earlier this year, September 28th, so I hope you all can come, we will have better weather in September. And then one other thing, there's a private well class webinar coming up, that is called Septic Systems 101, that is July 17th from 1:00 to 2:30 p.m. You can register for the webinar to learn about septic system management, and that is on privatewellclass.org, or you can go to the village website, or find it on our Facebook page, just click on it, like to register.
Questions for the clerk? Agenda item 12, there's reports of the standing committee. I don't have anything really underpaid for brand new communications, other than my wife's comment about the newsletter looking really sharp. And I'll skip to my D, which is external relations. The administrator is to be commended for what has been exceptional leadership in our region. IDOT is proposing a complete shutdown of Route 22, starting next week, for repairs to the, to the, thank you to the culprit, attended the Flint Creek underneath. It presents a tremendous threat to Good Shepherd. We have been actively involved with our representatives of fidelity. We were on a call with the head of government affairs, who are advocate at the corporate importers in Main Towns Grove. We've got a variety of contacts coming in on this to very high levels in Springfield. Since we don't believe there's evidence that this is kind of a top graph, this is kind of just a, an administrative attitude that we openly reverse and overturn. It reminds me of oftentimes folks in fidelity's line of work, and this, you all know that's what I do for a living, will earn eighteen months worth of pay in two weeks, because they've really, they've really jumped on this with both of you. Karen should be singled out for special praise. Every fire chief in the region has applauded her proactive activity on this, and she's been, she's been ringing the alarm on this issue to, it's brought us even closer to Good Shepherd, although we've always had a very good relationship with them. And I want to commend her for that, because it's never easy task to reverse these things, but we at least have the ability of a lot of work having been done, because she's the one organizing, including the meeting here with the IDOT officials. I think Jim and I, as lawyers, would tell you, anybody who promises a client a guaranteed outcome in litigation or legislation is misleading themselves, but I think we're doing everything we can. And there are a few tricks left that haven't yet been decided, but we've got a very forceful plan, and I remain cautiously optimistic that we can get policy level folks in Springfield and the agency and the governor's office to understand the concerns, because it's up to a seventeen-minute additional delay, which for a stroke patient or a heart attack patient could be different. I have, I have menthephokes involved at IDOT, so I don't want to make, I won't, I won't allow myself the luxury of speculating, but the fire chiefs have been, the US State Department phrased it, there was a full and frank exchange of views. And we're hoping that policy level folks will appreciate those concerns. So anything you'd like to add on that?
No, other than the seventeen minutes came from IDOT, and when I was taking a look at that detour, and just, I think it's about ten miles, the detour, you have to come down from 59 to 14, and you just think about how bad 14 is now during rush hour, and then you have all the detoured traffic that way, that I'm thinking, it's going to be even possibly worse than what they're projecting. So it's just very scary, very scary.
I listened to talking about shutting it off completely.
Yes, that's, that's why the alarm is so scary. From what point to what point?
They evaluated the one lane option and then came back, I think it was last week, and said, no, we can't do that, because it's not wide enough, it's not safe enough, the drop off is too steep, it's not wide enough, so we're going to go for full closure.
What, when do they propose to start it then, and where?
July 15th.
That's, where, what are the?
The closure would be east of Harbor and west of Old Barrington Road. So anybody coming from the east to get to Good Shepherd wouldn't need to take the detour.
Yeah, the notion that if there's not enough road is simply a cost thing. All they would have to do is fix it, tear it up, and then do it again. So we're, we've got a pretty forceful, I'm satisfied that at least the initial plan is correct, it may require adjustment, and I'll, we'll certainly keep you all up to date on it, if you can conserve your residents, please, to work them to make, because Karen and I are really living this right now with each other. We have another call scheduled for tomorrow with Good Shepherd.
So how long do they expect?
They expect the current, they're compromised, we should do a full closure and pay the contractor to work 12 other days rather than eight other days, so they would expect it to be about four weeks then.
Oh, gee, sweet. And anybody who knows what the traffic's now's been from 59 to 12, what the sister project knows what a, what a.
Yeah.
There's, there's no good, other than having one lane remain open, which is what they've done east of 59, it's the only way to really assure public safety. And so far, you know, we can't, I can't speak because I didn't attend, but the chiefs have been pretty aggressive in their, in their meeting rhetoric with this, because, you know, it's not trivial or trite to say, human lives can legitimately be lost here. So both of that's reports to D, so we can go on the lighter side of the news. Trusty Thompson, community relations, special events, and veteran security, I think we've covered a lot of that, but if you'd like to add.
Yes, we have things, President Paul. First, I want to start with the veterans of Lake Barrington Shores, they're happy their angels support our troops program beginning in August. They collect necessity items for troops deployed in harm's way, and we'll have a full report in the August meeting on that, so be prepared to collect. And regarding the July 18th concert, I just wanted to really say a couple things. Number one, I want to really emphasize our thanks to, to Signor Yama for doing those signs for us, no charge, for Angel Softwater, providing the water for us, for Clark for the mosquito and bait and spray, and for Waste Management for their ADA accessible porta potty. And also tell you that the marketing, it's included LBS's show lines newsletter, the Barrington Area Chamber of Commerce emails for members. All Bay Hyde members are receiving the information for distribution to their residents, and next door Barrington URL, has it, it's on there right now if you want to look at it. And also a press release by Ryan McClocken, the strategies for what they've done. And that's my report.
Thank you. Questions for Jim? 12C, I've been talking about, Kathleen kind of gave Andy's report earlier, so I'll just refer trustees to Kathleen's report in terms of what Andy would otherwise mention, and he'll be back next month, so. 12F Finance, HR and Administration, Trusty Rickby?
Thank you. Bill report, first month of the year.
Yeah. Okay, 12F Open Spaces in Village Facilities, Trusty Mitchell is in Maine, but Karen, is there anything to report on this, may I?
Excuse me, I would just say that we've been working on the cameras installation, and they're completed at the water plant. We're waiting for internet service so that they can be active someplace else, so we can look at them on our phone. And also, they've started a camera project here at Village Hall. Quite timely, they say, had a call today that there, somebody playing tennis last night and their car got hit by somebody who pulled it in the parking lot and backed into their car. I went to the, our old cameras that we, the cameras we have right now, and all you can see is the white car blob, I mean, you can't really distinguish any kind of license plates or anything like that. So I called the gentleman back, I just let him know that we didn't have any detailed information, other than, yeah, it was a white Prius that hit you, but, and he said it did damage the car, just damaged his white back of the car, but still, we hope that the new cameras that we'll have, one will be a license plate weird quality camera, and the others will be.
camera, and the others will be strategically placed around the outside and inside of Village Hall.
Questions for the administrator on Trustee Mitchell's report? The other piece, of course, we've covered earlier, which was the agreement with Lake County Forest Reserve concerning the trails. 12G, Public Safety Engaged Communities, Trustee Schaller. Thanks for putting together the briefing.
Well, thank you to the Sheriff's Department for putting our act of shooter presentation together and seeing where that goes. And if that can be expanded or involve each of us from the area, but put initial awareness of what to do. Interesting that Karen and I both get the Sheriff's Office monthly reports, crime related. But if you think, you know, Robyn doesn't do anything when she's down here, just sits in the back of her meeting and enjoys life in southwestern Lake County. We had a month of May, there were 12 alarms, not banks, two battery reports, two death investigations, four domestic in progress, four financial crimes, one hazardous situation, three neighbor problems, one solicitor complaint, one stalking complaint, two suicide attempts, theft of a vehicle, and theft report at all. So, we more recently had another couple suicide attempts to take place. So, you think we're bubbled down here like, like Barrington, it's not true. Did you want to add anything, Robyn, to our reports, or things are under control?
Yeah, well, just Eric, what you said, the suicide rate down, there's much more of that in October, 7 a.m., like, maybe that, or they don't know.
Oh, thank you again, Sheriff's Department for what they do, because they said we have a fair amount of activity down here. And that's our police department, so using, as was pointed out in the act of shooter thing, we can be here in four or five minutes. And not only in four or five minutes, but they can have just about the entire department if needed, if you're back towards, part of portion of that way. Director Countryside Fire Protection District, they re-elected all their officers. Keith Hanson is president. Thomas Long Dr. Logue, Vice President. Ethan Howard is treasurer. Marvin Ellis, Secretary, and our former Treasurer, Paul Stock is a, still a trustee with the Director Countryside Fire Protection District. And Ms. Karen is quite the Director Countryside, is very vocal in their office, as she works by, by, that comes up frequently with our buildings. Wacca Fire District didn't have a meeting in last month. As far as heated communities, progress is now 10 new homes, two are local immediately, one are construction, seven residential, priced from $569.9 to $741.9, ranging in size from 3,200 to 40,000 square feet. So, most of our Blue Estre Lane, I think we saw the report, we've reimbursed money for those to the regular players, so we're eager for that to continue. Lots of activities, but only 43 MLS closings to date. There were 64 last year as of this time of the year, so sales are not the best right now, but the average sale price is unknown most times.
That's remarkable. That's remarkable.
And the veterans put on all the flags, bought 650 new flags.
Yes, brand new flags.
Brand new flags. They're in price in large, only have yellow flags. That's it.
Questions for Trustee Schaller? Okay. 12F, Agent Rose in Industrial, Trustee Perkins.
Thank you. I'm going to turn this over to Karen, but first I just wanted to say I recently attended the seminar, the IML seminar for newly enlisted officials and learned all the ins and outs and do's and don'ts. So, you know, I just got a lot of, a lot of great information from that, and hopefully I make all the right decisions. I'm going to let Karen talk about the roads.
Yeah, we already talked about Route 22, which is probably the major. Anderson Road is completed, so the contractor got in and got out in like a couple of weeks, which was phenomenal. So, we're just finishing up all the paperwork on that. I'll be taking a look at a minor crack seal and patching program later on this summer for maintenance of some of our streets that need a little TLC, you know, that we will not be paving the next couple of years to help them last longer, so, with whatever money I can find.
Okay, are there other questions for Trustee Perkins or the administrator? You guys, if you look at these next things, there's no old business, no ordinances, no reservation, no new business. So, we go to a second opportunity for the public to address the board's report. No one seeks it. There's no possession. So, what's our favorite motion? Move by Schaller, seconded by Rippey, all those on paper? Closed. Karen?